Martha France, here.
We have the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on August 25th.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for our regular scheduled meeting held on August 25th, 2025. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of our August 25th meeting. Any questions? If not, we accept it as presented. We have approval of our bills for August 22nd, 2025, in the amount of $30,138 and 28 cents.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept our bills dated August 22nd through September 4th, 2025, in the amount of $30,138 and 28 cents. I'll second.
You have a motion and a second for acceptance of our bills to pay. Any questions, please?
Questions on the bills. So we have Jim Palmer, three times on here for eight, nine, 10, almost $11,000. It's referencing a water leak. So there's one near Front Street and one near Village Lane. Were they the only ones that worked on it?
We worked on it as well. We helped with it, yeah.
No other subcontractors?
No.
Okay. No bills from John Barry?
Why would John Barry bill us?
He was up there, just asking.
I remember the work, but I don't bill everybody.
The transducer for Bridge Street, $1,400 and change. Is that a failure?
Yeah, the old one died. It's not working right now.
And how old was it?
Six, maybe seven years old. Put it on the listings, put it.
And the useful life of those is typically?
That's what he told me. We tried to look into other options because I think that lasts very long. But he said for now, that's the best option we have.
So the useful life of that is typically like five years? We used it for six?
He said between five and six, yeah.
Okay. And what other equipment do we have like that that's at the end of its useful life? Do you have a list?
No.
Okay.
I didn't realize it was until it pretty much stopped working.
Okay. We have a card reader for Bulk Water System, $15, almost $1,600.
Yeah, it's for the One House Building, wastewater plant for farm farmers and stuff.
Okay. And we have one there now?
We've always had one there, the one that was there working.
Okay. And the useful life, how long did we have that?
I'm not sure. Gosh.
I think it was over 10 years.
Ten years before me, though.
Okay. And then the one that we bought now is a life cycle of what?
I don't know.
Did we get a warranty on it?
I don't know. Did they come with a warranty? I'm not sure.
I would have to ask them for a warranty.
Okay. Did we get a warranty on the transducer?
They don't have one for it.
Okay. So no on that? And you're going to ask if we got one on the card reader, correct?
The card reader is the same exact card reader we have. So they just basically took a part off of a piece of equipment and put it on ours. So.
And did we have a warranty on it?
I don't know that. They did not verify a warranty of it.
Okay. Are you going to check?
I can send an email.
Okay. And also ask the useful life, if you would, please. Annual fire extinguisher, $589. I assume that's the handheld ones that are in the buildings. How many of those and what buildings did we have inspected?
This building, we have the office, the old water plant, and the pool barns, Lincoln Street restrooms. I think that's about it. Twenty-eight of them, I think, we have?
Four. Okay. USA Blue Book, $165.
That's for water testing supplies. And then the IVX is something we put on before we go pick a brush because some people are really nice and thrilled or pleasant and they can look at brush.
Work leads to independence, $202. Documents shredding. And then we have the Cindy Hoffner, $176. Record sorting, organizing, per record retention. And that then is generating the documents to be shredded, correct?
Correct.
Northwest Pools, $501. Pool chemicals. Is this the last one we're charged for that?
I believe so.
Environmental Care, $460. Again, I've reported multiple times they're spraying too close to the canal. They have to be 25 feet off of there.
I asked them and they're not spraying or putting pellets down. And it usually stays on the backside of the fence and that's probably over 25 feet.
We have Jim Palmer again. Fowler Farm, what is that, $174, $175? Aquamaster.
A weed company.
And where are we using that?
We use it along the ditches and along the riverbank. What I did was contacted the parks. They were using some Roundup water stuff like all the Fowler Farms. They don't make that anymore. But this is the newest of waters.
And you can spray it right next to the water?
They say you can get it closer to the water.
Can I get the MSDS sheet on that?
Sure.
That's the same one that the state of Ohio was using.
Right.
Down at Mary Jean Thurston.
Yes.
Stones all the way from the canal west.
Yes, yes. It's just a different name. Now they don't make that Roundup anymore. This is what they make instead of it.
And then Wood County Sheriff is almost $11,000. That is for not even a month. Do we know how many hours that is?
It is for a month.
It is for a month, okay. Yeah, do we know how many hours it is?
Two hundred and eight.
And then in the bank reconciliation, there's others that haven't been posted yet. Are those going to hit in the next report?
So those are checks that were wrote that haven't been deposited by the companies? So yes. So we're talking about balancing payments?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So those were on the last bill approval report. Lucky Farms for $1,100. Lawyer, $1,400.
That we approved. Otherwise, she wouldn't have written the check.
Okay.
We'll take a vote, please.
Alba Luiz Estep?
Yes.
Lawrence Lane?
Will.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Rick Tolles?
Yes.
Joey Donsbok?
Yes.
Martha France?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Deputies not here yet. I only have a couple of things. So Halloween is going to be this year on the 31st. It's going to be from 5:00 to 7:00 and 7:30 at the Fire Dollar Judging. We have just five weeks until the festival. A lot of stuff has to happen between now and then for a lot of organizations. And I hope, giving them luck and hope we have good weather for it. Next three weekends, I believe there's music in the pavilion behind La Rose in the park there. And that should be the last ones for the year until the festival. That's really all I have right now. Whatever your thoughts. Chad, any one here?
Okay. I don't have a whole lot either. I'd like to thank the Grand Growers Club for inviting me to their meeting a couple of weeks ago. Very informative. Got some good info from them, some good feedback. They have a lot of good ideas. Also received a final quote for the basketball tennis courts that came in $24,705. And that's just peg lagging it and putting another code on top. They're not going to cut anything out like Ohio Paving is. It's up to you who we use. They are not the cheapest. Morlock is $24,705. Rudder Dudley is $24,425. And Ohio Paving comes in at $26,240. But like I said, they're going to grow them three quarters of an inch off and put them on top. It doesn't matter to me who we go with. I just like to get it started, get grants started, so. Tim Brown would like to know if we can plant another tree on the tow path. We looked at a spot today. It's between, it's the third bench down that way across the bridge and between a tree and the bench there. It seems to be a good spot for it. He wants to know, you guys think that's all right? He'll pay for it, get everything taken care of.
Did he mention what it was?
For me?
Did he mention what, a tree?
Oh, it's the same one he planted last year. I can't remember it off the top of my head.
Okay.
And then the tree by the Providence House again, it's got those, scrolling those little balls. I don't know what you guys want to do, if we should just cut it down. So I only cut the other one down that had them. I mean, it's going to start smelling up and they're probably complaining about it, getting on the sidewalk and stuff again.
And tracking it in their stores.
Right. I just noticed that today we pulled the grate off of it and put some mulch on it. I had to look up and I saw that they're in there again. I haven't seen any other trees with them again, but it's up to you. I mean, we can cut it down there.
What is it that you're trying to prevent? That it's going to fungus or it's good?
Oh, these little, the fruits. I don't know what they're called, but they smell really bad when you step on them and they get drug in those stores. I think they complained about it a couple of years ago when it happened again.
And it's the only tree downtown that's like that?
Well, we cut the one down that had it. And then this one didn't have it last year and it has it again this year. I'm not sure why it switches, but.
Huh. Is it a Bradford pear?
No.
Okay.
I can't remember the name off the top of my head.
I think those are ginkgo trees, actually.
Yeah, they are ginkgo, yeah. That's what they are.
Oh, that's what they, that's what's all the way down the street on both sides.
Yes, yes.
So I would recommend you talk to an arborist and see how you control that as opposed to cutting them down.
Well, when the arborist came out last time, we talked to her about it. She says you can't really because you can't tell when it's going to happen or not. She said you could cut them down and keep, not having that problem.
She kind of said it goes from male to female.
Yeah, they can go back and forth for some reason.
Back and forth and you never can tell what's going to trigger that in any species.
That's all I have.
The Grand Growers, what's in regard to the canal, what's the next step?
I mean, it's the Parks Committee and stuff, but like I said, you guys can give me ideas. We can try to look for grants for something like that. I did speak to a grant writer from Kleinfelder. I'm going to try to meet with her maybe this week or next week. She wants to walk down it and come up with some ideas of what kind of grants we can get for it. But like I said, it's up to council and the Parks Committee before I do anything.
So have you talked to the Parks Committee chairperson?
I haven't.
I'll reach out to you, Chad, and I'll get some more information and get a meeting scheduled.
Okay. Thank you.
And you had some information from the Army Corps of Engineers. Did you do anything with that?
I had some information from?
Yeah. Well, it was provided to you.
No, I didn't.
You haven't done anything with that? So is it okay if I mention a name?
Sure.
But.
Is it mine? You looked at me.
I was just looking in the general area. Teague, can I mention a name?
You got it.
So there was some information submitted. I thought it was really good information. When we're going after these projects, I mean, we need to educate ourselves on the history. And I think it was Tim Brown who actually brought that up in the Grand Growers meeting. But the deal was completed in 1907 under the state regulatory agency ODNR. Last inspected was in 2022. It's inspected every five years. The operational status date is through today, through last week. The hazard potential classification is high. The category indicates potential hazard to the downstream area from failure or misoperation of the dam. Probable loss of human life that impacts the economic, environmental, and lifeline interests. The hazard does not speak to the condition of the dam or the risk of failing. The condition of the dam assessment is fair. The condition assessment date was given in 2023. And the last emergency action plan that we had was 2017. Now, I don't know if, I guess you're in Parks, if you know if there is a current emergency action plan available?
Through the county, I believe.
And are you aware of that?
They follow their guidelines.
I usually just follow the county guidelines, yes.
Okay. And so we have a copy of that on file in the office?
I'll have to look for it.
Okay.
Action, in case of what?
It's an emergency action plan in case of failure.
Of the dam?
It says hazard potential, misoperation of the dam, probable loss of human life.
I'm trying to follow what's written in it.
Economic.
The dam?
Yes.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
This dam up here?
Yes.
When did they look at it? When was it examined or when was that? That report's from when?
The assessment?
Whatever you're reading.
Five thirteen twenty twenty-three.
They just rebuilt it about 10 years ago.
Yes.
Emergency action plan was January 27th, 2017.
Okay.
Okay.
So it hasn't been 10 years.
So several thoughts. ODNR should be sharing these inspection reports with your office. Not able to find the emergency action plan on the website. If we have one, it should be there. Eight-year-old plan may need updated. I would think downtown businesses, fire department, affected residents should know and be able to execute the plan. And then we've talked about this before, but does the village have an emergency plan for weather-induced flooding? The dams and canal are very old. Technology on flood mitigation hasn't improved. So this is where you're referred to, I think, and it was a great referral, but the US Army Corps of Engineers should be somebody that we would be contacting directly. Is that on your to-do list?
I'm writing it down right now.
Okay.
Who appeared what you're reading from?
Is it okay from the audience member if I mention a name?
I can share it with you all. Peggy's alone. Could you please send that to all of us, please?
So Peggy does really good at research and giving suggestions. Rarely grows legs in the council, so I think that emergency action plan, especially when we're talking about developing the canal and refurbishing it, it's a really good source of reference.
I would just like to add a quick comment that it doesn't grow legs when we don't have the same information that you have. Peggy could have shared that with the entire group and maybe then it would have gained some traction. If we, if you're reading something to us, it's kind of hard to process what we're trying, what we're being asked to do.
Did the village administrator have it and the fiscal officer?
I don't know. What if it's from two years ago?
They had.
And you want us to take action on it? You want to talk about it right now? That none of us are prepared for a discussion.
No, I don't want you to talk about it right now. I'm telling you, this information was shared with the village administrator. He hasn't done anything with it. And so I'm bringing it to the attention of the council so that we can continue to follow up with Chad and/or take action because you're the chairperson of the building.
But again, I think that when you make backhanded comments that we're not, we're not taking any action or there's nothing gains traction, it's because we don't all have the same information.
I just shared it, Rachel.
Well.
So would you like to take action?
Let's go.
No, I want the information first.
Okay. It was just shared with you.
You've read it to me. And then, yeah.
Chad has it.
Okay. Moving on. Point of order, sorry.
Anything else?
Uh, not on Chad. Well.
No, I don't worry. Whole business. We're still up in this village administrator's report.
Yeah, I know. So I was talking to him because he mentioned the Grand Growers. No, that's a meeting. I asked for a plan. There isn't one. So I brought into the dam.
Yeah, on the Christmas reporting.
I gave you all a copy of the office bank rec. And I will pass around for your signatures. And we would like all members of council to sign next.
Yes.
That would be nice and all members of council to sign.
I have a question about Crystal.
Yes.
It says that our bank balance is 3.8 million in Huntington. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
And we're getting a yield of a quarter of a percent. And so we earned $795 on 3.8 million.
I'm sure that's not what that says. Where are you reading that?
I'm on the Huntington Public Fund Business Interest Checking, page one of three.
Okay. So you're on the bank statement?
Yes.
Then yes. So you're on the bank.
So we have 3.8 billion in the bank.
We do.
And we're earning a quarter percent of interest.
We are earning, yeah, that's what it says right now.
Okay. And we don't invest this money in any other way?
We actually have a Star Ohio account.
Okay.
That's invested.
And how much is invested and what's our return on that?
Star Ohio's, I think, about four and a half.
Four and a half what?
4.43%. Yep.
And how much is invested?
On the bank rec. About 1.4.
And so we have 2.4 just sitting in the bank, not invested.
We have 3.8 in regular.
You want to go ahead and tell them what we're working on? This would be a good time to tell us.
Okay. So the representative for Huntington Bank has reached out to me and asked if we wanted to pursue putting money into different things to gain more interest on our funds, so.
We're working on that.
I gave him a deadline of the end of October to get all the information to us. Just recently, just about a month ago.
Just find it or run it.
Yeah, we're, that's correct. I don't have any information.
You've had something for three years.
Sorry, I haven't been sharing.
No, I didn't. I just got this. The report was three years old that the federal government did. I just, I just, I'm in touch. Okay. Clarification again. You said 1.4 is invested with Star?
So if you go to page two of the bank rec, it'll show you what's in there.
Yes, good. And right in front of you.
Page two of three.
I'm on two of three.
Okay. So it shows you primary, that is the Huntington account. Shows investment, it says Star Ohio.
It's on page two of three.
No, no, not the bank statement, the bank rec. So go back to the first page. Yep. Right there.
Okay. So primary, so prior bank, how good is the bank balance? So our bank balance, so we have over $5 million. Yep. 1.3 is invested, 3.8 is not, other than the checking.
Correct, correct.
Okay. And that's the way we've been for a long time?
Correct.
For a while, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Now, would you like to sign that bank rec that you traditionally want to sign?
No, not until we actually do a financial review, then I would sign it.
You haven't signed one in three and a half years. There's no financial review since then.
No, we have not. We have not gone over that in detail.
Yeah, we have.
The very first year.
You just refused to sign it.
Very first year, very first time I signed it, but since then, we haven't gone over it. And I would love to.
Are we going to have communications?
I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, excuse me. We have a resolution on the agenda tonight from the county auditor's office. This is their very best guess of what the village will receive next year in the property taxes. And this needs to be back to their office by October 1st. So potentially we can get two of those. And that's all I have.
Good, thank you.
So can you explain the numbers that are on here, Crystal?
How about we wait until it gets its first reading and then you can ask the questions at that time?
Reading communications, I have a town teal. I have a letter from them. It's been some, it's been a couple of weeks ago, but I had just called them and told them to go ahead and do what they wanted to do. And that was to put the ribbons around the trees and the light posts. They do it every year. And it's a national awareness for, a campaign for ovarian cancer, which is very important for a lot of people. God help those that do ever get ovarian cancer and God help them to get better. Hopefully it works. That's all I have, really, yet, on communications. Any reports on standing committees?
I don't have a report, but I do have a little announcement that we're going to start working on the temporary appropriations. So that's the first three months of the year, January, February, and March. So if your committees have any projects that will have expenditures for those first three months, get that information to Crystal by October 10th so that she can work on the temporary appropriations. We can get a finance meeting scheduled. And at that time, we'll go over the temporary appropriations and the investments.
So would that statement apply to the chamber as well? If the chamber sees investments that they want?
It's for council to appropriate budget, so I'm not sure how that committee is working.
If they felt they needed some money for next year, would they not submit it to council to be considered in the appropriations?
The temporary ones? I don't know if that would be necessary for the temporary ones unless they had an expenditure for the first three months of the year. The permanent appropriations are what we traditionally do after a year out. This is to get the bills paid for the first three months in any projects that may be on the slate.
Reading of ordinances and resolutions. We have the first reading, Resolution 2025-05. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax allowances and certifying them to the county auditor. It's the first reading. We have the second reading of ordinance 2025-3. Ordinance amending and establishing pay bands for the village of Grand Rapids.
So I have a question about the second reading. In the, in the last meeting, there was a conversation about the fact that we needed to control our spending and we didn't know how much money was left. And I would like to recommend that we put a pause on this ordinance until we actually do a financial review and understand what is in our accounts and what balance is left.
This ordinance that's on the table is to establish pay bands. And then I, what I indicated is then yearly raises would be done by a voice vote.
So is the council up for a increase based on either of these ordinances?
Yes.
And I would like to pause that until we review the budget to see what kind of money we have left back in salaries.
I think there's plenty there to take care of. This is a little bit stifling, isn't it?
There's not a whole lot.
But we shouldn't look at the data, shouldn't we, now?
We're talking four dollars.
Yeah.
Is what the difference is in the council pay. I just rounded it up from 60, summed up, $60 to $70.
Should we make a recommendation on anything that's spending money that isn't an emergency without doing a full financial review?
We have, I did meet with Crystal on this before we prepared it, yes. And then we had a finance meeting. We've had a finance meeting and we want to hear this.
But we just approved the hiring of a new employee without seeing how much money was left in the fund. But we didn't approve benches based on the same argument because we didn't.
Because there wasn't any money left in the benches fund.
But we never looked at the fund when we hired someone. We just did it last, last meeting.
Right. Because we never replaced Chad and that money was in there from when Chad was never replaced.
Okay. How much money is left? And how much are we going to save?
You should have, you should have asked and requested that beforehand. We don't bring those financial reports with us every meeting.
But that is my argument to pause this until we actually do that review.
What's the second reading?
Yes, and you can pause them.
It's got one more reading.
Yes.
We voted on that.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to pause the reading on that until we do a full financial review just to figure out what's left, what's been allocated and what's left.
That's your motion?
That is the motion.
Is there a second to pause the motion for the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three?
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second for ordinance amending and establishing pay bands for the village of Grand Rapids to be paused. Take a vote.
Lynn Swobine?
Yes.
Rachel Smith?
No.
Rick Tolles?
No.
Jody Donstock?
No.
Martha France?
No.
Louise Yost?
No.
Motion fails. Move on to unfinished business.
I have several things I'd like to review. The first one is the covered bridge that Glenn was going to do. What's the status of that?
Glenn has got some engineering to do, and he's also got some things with the DNR to talk over with them about putting the bridge there because of the water that will push against it when it does fall.
So do we need to follow up with Glenn? Do we need to take it on as a project ourselves? Should we budget for next year?
Um, we're kind of working on it. He's got some other ideas of how to do it to control water flow. I think he's still working on that.
Mm-hmm. In fact, he's, I just saw Crystal there, so he's got a little, wants to get together with you and I to kind of show us what he's thinking on that.
Okay.
Uh, the kayak launch, did you get anywhere on that?
I was going to go talk to Parks down here and see if they got theirs.
We do have theirs, theirs is great.
Right, that's what I'm trying to find out where they got theirs. I was going to talk to Mario, see if he had anything to do with it. Like I said, I looked on Google, now all you have is those kind of ones where you just cut the bottom on it and launch it. I haven't found any like one at Park. So it's something I'm going to ask them, but yeah, I mean, I don't really think I need it this year. I don't want to put it and take it out a week later, but we'll try to get it for next year.
Um, the benches, last meeting, we talked about, you had a report that said that only forty-one percent of the taxes had been collected, and that information is not correct. Understand you have a new report on that?
No, we requested a new report, we have not received it yet.
Okay.
So, and they haven't told us that it's not correct. We, we questioned them on some of the figures.
So I talked to them, and they said that in fact, they've collected ninety-five percent of the taxes due, and that is completely within normal ranges.
Did they give you that report?
No.
Because that's what we're waiting on.
I didn't ask for a report, I talked to them directly.
Okay.
I did too, and we didn't say that, so I guess we talked to two, two different people.
I can get them to publish a report for you if you'd like.
I requested one, so.
The forty-one percent is what they've collected in the second half, but they collect more than fifty percent in the first half because people like myself pay our taxes for the full year upfront. So that's where you get to the ninety-five percent.
So they have a new software system, and they're trying to work through all of that. And Crystal had did, she did request additional information from them.
But we used that forty-one percent as a reason to.
No, we used our appropriation that we had at the last meeting, and I told you that there was only eleven thou, um, let's see, lands and buildings, well, that's, twenty-five thousand dollars is appropriated. Eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents as of August twenty-first was already encumbered and or spent. We did not have the amount of money that you were requesting. That's why we didn't go forward with the benches. So that could be something that you could ask for with the permanent appropriations next year. It was not budgeted, it was not part of our goals, and I know you say that we don't have goals, but when we do the appropriations, the permanent ones, we do incorporate the goals of each committee, and that's how we come up with the numbers.
I mean, Crystal said in the past, she copied last year's report over and then will adjust by a certain percentage amount. I haven't ever seen.
That's to get us started for discussion at the finance meeting. And then, I mean, if you go back and look at the finance minutes, it will tell you two years ago and last year, what the different things were appropriated for, Lynn. We don't just put money into a pot and say, oh, well, we don't know what we're going to spend it on. We have, we have, you know, goals and things that we want to accomplish each year.
The thirty-three thousand for cutting the trees down on the canal, was that in the budget?
No, but it ended up, we had to find it. Why did we have to find it? Because it became a safety issue.
All those trees were a safety issue?
According to Chad and.
How many fell down during that storm?
Right.
That we had to cut up? And then we identified additional ones that were a safety hazard, so yes.
They weren't all a safety hazard.
Majority of them were leaning over by the water. And then when it does fall.
So the forty-one percent.
And I took, and I took a walk.
I'm speaking, I'm talking to you.
I was talking.
I was talking to you before you even started chatting with her. When the trees lean over the canal and they do fall, it pulls the bank out with it. And then you have a really big mess because then you got to fix the bank, and it's not easy to do. So get that into your head.
Your job as the mayor in this meeting is to facilitate the meeting, not, not drive information.
Well, that's what I'm doing right now.
The council has a discussion about the information.
Well, because I knew that that's what it does, and you don't understand it. When it pulls the bank out and rips a big hole in it, then it's really hard to fix.
Try John.
And it's also hard to get the wood out of the canal.
Turn your volume, please. He's sharing information.
Just like you're trying to.
Uh, so the forty-one percent had nothing to do with the benches then, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I did take a look at the benches, the ones that you say that are a safety issue, and I only found four that I thought were a safety issue. I sat on each and every one of them, and I found four, and I did report that to the village administrator as he requested at the last meeting.
Okay, then would you be open to replacing four benches?
No, I would not, because I found out that they belonged to the business owners. I thought they belonged to the village. So they belong to the business owners, and I think we need to go that route first.
You want the business owners to, to pay for benches?
No, I, business owners have indicated, according to Chad at the last meeting, some of the benches that they did take when we bought new ones, they were supposed to be maintaining them, and I don't believe that they've done that in some occasions.
Okay, so you would expect the business owners to have their bench, would be taking care of it themselves?
I think that's what the administrator said.
Well.
I can talk to them, see if they won't, if they don't, then we'll tell them they got to put it behind the business or get out of there, so someone doesn't care.
I, I think we talked about that at the last meeting, where there was one business owner that said that he, he wanted to repair his and, you know, refurbish it. And we just said, if there is a bench that's in disrepair or a safety hazard, to contact the village administrator, we would take it out for them, uh, and to do whatever needs to be done, but until we figure this out, I think it just.
Okay, there's been an announcement amongst the council that there will be a DORA meeting, I believe September twenty-ninth at six o'clock, is that true? And has that been made public yet?
I have not put it, put it out yet.
Okay, and where will that be held?
Here.
In this building? Okay, is that a meeting firm that we can broadcast it now?
I believe so. I mean, it's scheduled unless something comes up at the last minute, which I don't know what would happen, but, yeah.
Okay. The other thing is we hired a, an employee full-time, and according to the, or promoted on full-time, the Employee Policy and Procedure Manual, part-time employees are not eligible for promotion. So, just think we need to review this. This is a draft copy, by the way. Is there a revised copy out on the website anywhere of the Employee Manual and Council Rules?
Um, I know the Council Rules are on there, I don't know if Employee Manual is. I have to look.
Okay, what is that dated?
This, the Employee Policy Procedures says draft on it. That's the only copy I had.
Is there a revision date on it anywhere?
Nope. No, there's not. And the Rules and Regulations for Council Members says tentative March twenty twenty-five, but I don't know if it was ever published.
No, it was not. A lawyer has it. Are you finished, Lynn?
Yes, I believe so.
I just have one thing. Chad, is the engineering study tomorrow for the?
That's what they told me when I talked to them on the phone last week.
Okay, because it was supposed to be last week.
And said something came up, yeah.
Something came up, and they're supposed to be here now tomorrow.
That's, yeah, as far as I know.
Did they give you a time?
No, he said you'll notice cameras on poles, and that's how, that's how they do it.
Okay.
They didn't give me no time. He said because they're subcontracted through a different company, so once that does it.
Okay.
But if they're not here tomorrow, I'll call them again.
Okay, thank you.
And can you tell, is that going to be a twenty-four hour?
I thought it was an eight hour.
Eight hours?
Yeah, sure, I guess it do.
According to what ODOT needed.
Right, he said it might be longer to try to get a better traffic study.
Okay.
That was on unfinished. I had one other thing on unfinished. Couple meetings ago, Lynn, I asked you about why you would want a non-disclosure agreement on the settlement you had for suing this next door, and you were going to give us an answer?
Uh, no, I asked if we can talk about the settlement, I mean, talk about the lawsuit, and you said no.
Why do you need a non-disclosure agreement? So people can't find out why you're doing it?
I am open to having a full public meeting on the lawsuit for next door at any time you guys would like. I'll even hold it, facilitate it on that meeting.
I don't think that's true, but we'll move on.
Well, wait, that's an answer to your question.
Or you can answer it?
Yes. If we're talking about the, the lawsuit, I will have an open public meeting about the lawsuit at any time.
Right here.
You're waiving your right to any litigation regarding.
I just wonder why you need a non-disclosure agreement?
Our, so we're going to talk about the lawsuit.
The non-disclosure agreement.
You're either talking about the lawsuit or you're not, John.
She skates around this all the time, like, it's the way she does it everything.
Anybody that has any questions on the lawsuit, please contact me directly, my phone and emails on the website.
Well, let's see, I do have it here in black and white, as big as Texas. First time I showed it, first time. I can do that.
John, please continue to facilitate the meeting and take your personal piece with me.
There's no personal things, it's what a mayor does. They try to protect the property that people have in the village.
Is that why Rachel's allowed to park and you gave, and you gave land away from Kevin Olman?
Not at all. We didn't give any land away to Kevin.
Yes, you did.
We have to go and tear that concrete up, but that's what we can do.
He has full use of it, blocks the alley, it's against the ordinance.
Move on, I'm sorry.
We're so close to.
New business, please.
John, are we going to talk with the sheriff?
Yes.
I apologize for being late.
That's okay.
You're okay?
I'm sorry. Any questions for the deputy?
Was there anything?
Yes, there was a resident complaining today of a black charger racing down West Second Street.
Okay.